I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We'll start with a public comment. If you'd like to address the board of public comment, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. You've come to the podium. Look in our direction. And you have three minutes to do a comment. Do we have anybody who wants to do a public comment? All right, we're going to move on. Let's see, we're at a public hearing for... I got it here. Acceptance of Unanticipated Revenue. Julie, do you want to present this?
Sure. Did you open the public hearing?
Yes, okay. I'm sorry. Make a motion, open a public hearing.
Second motion.
Second motion. Roll call, vote. Scott?
You don't need a motion. Just do it. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, the federal government, as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, granted a lot of money to a number of different governments and organizations, one of them being local government. So, under the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds under ARPA, the town of Lee is scheduled to receive $478,327. We have to accept this money under New Hampshire RSA 3195D because it is unanticipated revenue. The U.S. Treasury Department will issue final rules that will determine how we can spend the money. We've already received the interim final rules, which we've talked about a couple of times. The first half of the funds will come after we've applied, which will happen after this public hearing, assuming that the board votes to accept the funds. And the other half, I believe, is available in July of 2022.
That's it?
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Scott?
No.
No? Ms. Casper? Select person, Casper? No?
So, one other thing I would like to mention, you know, we've talked, in addition to, again, the interim final rules and the categories of ways in which we can spend the money, one of the ways that we can spend the money, which gives us, let's just say, the greatest latitude, is the revenue replacement. So, initially, I had thought that we wouldn't qualify for this because we, in fact, did not lose revenue during 2020, in the beginning of 2021, which is obviously a good thing. However, under the formulas and the methods that the federal government allows us to apply, they think that we've lost $691,158 in revenue. So, because that is more than the actual allocation that we're going to receive, we could, if we wanted to, use all of the money in that category, meaning the loss of revenue category. So, we'll just need to bear that in mind as we move forward with the discussions about how we're going to spend the money. Great.
Okay. Make a motion. Move to accept the local fiscal recovery funds as unanticipated revenue in the amount of $478,327. Can I get a second?
Second, now.
Roll call, vote.
Have we asked the public if they have any comments?
No, haven't. Any comment from the public? Okay. I repeat, selectman Mugby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes, motion passes. So, we'll move on. Item four. I'm sure I'm going to miss this.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. I know I'm going to mispronounce this name. I'm just going to call it by its first name. Jesse?
I was going to wait for the...
Waiting for the... Okay.
You don't have it on a flash drive or have a flash drive waiting for you?
I don't, no.
Okay. We'll move to the next one. Matt? Matt Claude? O R Y A?
I was confusing.
I'm in the chair. Somebody's talking. How is everybody doing?
Marvelous.
Good. I am here to ask for permission to utilize two light towers at Little River Park this fall to extend the ability for our programs to practice in the later part of the fall season. This was approved last year on a temporary basis. We did utilize that for our flight football program under the impression that it went really well, so just hoping that we can utilize those again this season.
Questions? Where are you putting them, again?
Wherever Steve tells me we can.
And where is Steve going to tell you to put them?
Probably the same places as they were last year.
Whereabouts were they last year? I don't remember.
One, I believe, was up by the sheep field. Then there was another one in between the sheep field and the multipurpose field.
Okay. So, the flight football is being played on the multipurpose field?
Yes.
Okay.
It worked out well last year, so I would actually think it would be nice to just make it a... let them do... just do it every year instead of having to come ask. And then, the other thing is, is the Lee Fair is around the same time and to let the town use the lights during the Lee Fair if we needed them.
That'd be great.
No problem. But not when the fireworks are going off?
Yes. Not when the fireworks are going off.
And defeat the purpose.
What about the parking lot? The kids are playing in there in the dark. Do they have a way to see when they're going to the area? Does it matter?
We have not specifically planned for lighting either in the parking lot or walking to or from. Just for the plane area.
Great. Are there any safety concerns?
Not that I'm aware of.
None of your worries? And we have had no complaints, right?
No.
Great.
Okay. I can make a motion. Move to approve O R Y A's request to use two light towers at Little River Park for sporting events. In late September, early November, lights will be turned off at 8:00 P.M. O R Y A will coordinate the placement of satellites with Steve Fuller, Public Works Director. Can I get a second?
Second? If we can also include in there that this is no longer temporary. It's ongoing until he gets told no.
So, until further notice?
Yeah, something like that.
Further notice?
And I should also state that we'll have them off by 8:00 P.M.
Roll call, vote. Selectman Brown, please. Second, now. Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Come, slide.
Jesse, you're looking to introduce the... set up.
Jesse, you going to be ready?
I think so.
All right.
Can I introduce it for him? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, could I provide a brief introduction? I'm Bill Lambert with the DOT.
He's with the Department of Transportation. He oversaw the project.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't see the...
Oh, no, it's not on there.
Just to provide a brief introduction?
Please.
Sure. Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Bill Lambert. I'm a state traffician there with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. For the past several years, I've been fortunate to sponsor projects with the UNH Civil Engineering Program, Senior Capstone Projects. Typically, what I do is sponsor projects that are challenging geometrically or traffic operations-wise, things that may not make the 10-year plan or necessarily have a crash history, but have some unique features. And we ask the students to take a look at it from a perspective of looking at alternatives, recognizing what some of the problems might be and looking at alternative solutions. The final product that Jesse is going to be presenting is not necessarily an engineering product, but it's a... it's kind of a good background. If the towns were interested in pursuing any of the recommendations, they could certainly work with the DOT or the regional planning and try to get something to move forward. We don't have any funding for any of these projects, but it's something to put on the table. I think Jesse and his team did a really good job this year. They reached out, gave some public input, and had some pretty good observations. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jesse.
Okay. Jesse? Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me tonight. This is a presentation... I'll get through it quickly because I know we don't have a lot on the agenda tonight. But this is a presentation that we did at the end of our Senior Capstone Project this semester at UNH. I just graduated in the spring, but I'll get right into it. Many of you probably recognize this intersection over between George Bennett, Lee Hook, 155, Mass Road. My team and I... Looks like the mouse isn't going to let me click. I can see it. You want my lights off?
No, I was going to say, turning it off and turning on again. Isn't less than number one about towns, right, where we're a few years behind in technology?
That's all right. We'll make it work. Yeah, so I'm Jesse Jacobez. I was the project manager. My other team members, Calvin and Christian, were unfortunately unable to make it here with us tonight, but I'll be presenting for them. The advisors on this project, Bill Lambert, who was up here a second ago from the New Hampshire DOT, Mike Dugess, Michelle Marshall, and Dr. Kyle Kwakowski, who is a Lee resident and a professor at UNH. And a quick overview of what we were trying to accomplish with this project was to evaluate the existing conditions over at that intersection, complete a road safety audit under the New Hampshire DOT model, and develop new alternatives to improve the safety of that intersection. And as a quick summary of what a road safety audit is, it's basically an examination of an intersection and evaluate it for aspects of safety. And once again, our objectives were to conduct site visits, evaluate the conditions of the intersection, obtain some data, meet with town officials and residents to discuss the project like we are right now, engage with the public to gather feedback, distribute surveys, and develop new alternatives. This part of the presentation isn't really critical to this meeting. It was more for our school portion of it. It was our schedule for completing the project, and we were right on time and finished up in May. So, here is a labeled map that we actually took with a drone on the site. And like I said, many of you are probably familiar with this area and how dangerous it sometimes can be for crossing traffic from Lee Hook Road over to George Bennett and the high speeds on 155 and even that curve there in the road. And here are some photos of concerns that we had with the intersection that we found through our site visits, which was poor geometry and poor lines of sight, especially at this junction here from George Bennett across 155 over to Lee Hook. And some signage that we didn't feel were totally adequate for the intersection in question. On the left, you can see one that's out in front of that town hall building on 155. And on the right, you can see chevrons that are helping motorists identify the curve that they're going on 155. However, we thought that a few more may be helpful. And actually, throughout the course of this project, the sign on the left actually changed. At the beginning of our project, it was the one that's pictured there, and then it eventually changed in the spring to the one that was pictured previously. And we actually believe as a team that the previous sign may be a little bit more realistic and adequate for the intersection question. And another standout feature of this area is its lack of sidewalks, crosswalks, bike lanes, and pedestrian features. It is a bustling little community you have here in Lee, and we feel like with the park right up the road and the elementary school, it would be a great opportunity to kind of create a network in the neighborhood and provide a safer refuge for pedestrians and cyclists and everything in between. So, throughout the course of this project, we actually... my team and I presented it at the out-of-town meeting back in the fall and introduced it. We also produced a survey for public input. It was distributed through the town's newsletter, the Neighborly Facebook page, where many residents mingle and interact and talk about happenings within the town, and also through the UNH Civil Engineering Department. And we had over 180 responses received in a little over a month of it being distributed. And we got a ton of great feedback from the community on things that they were concerned about and different ideas that they may have to improve the intersection. I know it might be tough to see on the screen, but I'll just kind of quickly summarize some of the results that we have from the survey. Many of the survey takers actually drive through the intersection multiple times a week, as I'm sure most Lee residents do. And about 80% of the respondents of the survey were residents in Lee, so we knew that the people responding were directly impacted by this intersection almost on a daily basis. And one of the reasons why we're doing this project is because not everybody feels very safe going through the intersection. And about... right there, that top bell curve-shaped data shows that the majority of respondents to the survey don't feel totally safe when traveling through that intersection. And some of the main concerns included fast travel speeds on 155, the poor lines of sight for crossing traffic, and the lack of sidewalks and pedestrian concerns. And just a few quotes that we got in our text portion of the survey included that the intersection is poorly designed and that if pedestrians are present, it gets even worse. And some respondents said they plainly just do not feel safe. And this responded on the top here. Very nerve-wracking, especially with my granddaughters in the backseat. This person is concerned for the safety of everybody in the vehicle. And on the bottom, though, not everybody that took our survey saw it as much of an issue. In fact, the respondent that we quoted here said that they don't find it to be much of an issue at all and that they live within 100 yards of the intersection that we were studying, and they don't see a change as necessary. So, as with any project like this, there are... not opposition, but folks that don't quite think that what we're doing is necessary, and that's okay. And it's all part of the process of getting things improved in a small town like this. So, to summarize the main areas of concern that we found with the intersection, the poor geometry, the high speeds on 155, the lack of lighting at night for motorists that may be unfamiliar with the area. I know when I first started going to school at UNH and I was traveling to the area, I tend to throw the high beams on when going through that section of road. The limited pedestrian accessibility, poor lines of sight, signage, and just preserving the historical aesthetic of the area and not doing anything too drastic to change the town of Lee and its aesthetic. And there were some challenges with our project. I don't really want to go too deep into it because it was more for our school portion of it. But obviously, with COVID, Bill and I... Bill was my advisor from the DOT throughout the course of the project, and we did everything pretty much through Zoom, all of our meetings and everything like that, and coordinating all of our schedules. And the difficulty to generate efficient designs with our limited experience, obviously, we were students at the time and we were still learning all about it. So, it was a little bit tricky coming up with the right solutions, but I think we did a nice job as a team, and you'll see those in a moment. Now, we created a design portfolio, which I believe was provided within the agenda tonight, that showcased few to no changes through moderate changes to major changes. And they... the town had requested that we do this at our first meeting in the fall. And I'd like everyone to keep in mind as we go through these next few slides that consistent considerations of design throughout all of these are added lighting and directional signs. So, you won't see those on the conceptual drawings, but they are our idea to stay there throughout each design. Here, I know it's a little bit dark to see in the room, but here's one with sidewalks and crosswalks added. It would, like I talked about earlier, it would just be a nice addition to give pedestrians a place to safely walk on the side of the road and not have to dodge any traffic, especially with the park and the school right up the road. It may offer more opportunity for the younger kids to walk around the neighborhood in a safer way. And here, we used our resources with the DOT to do very basic cost estimates. They're very, very rough in general for what we were doing, but this idea might cost around $1 million based on the construction and the engineering costs with four-foot bike lanes, four-foot sidewalks. And this idea addresses the pedestrian concerns, but not really the motor vehicle traffic. Next, we have another idea of creating T-intersections to eliminate the high speeds on 155. This design, although it's a state road, it may seem a little bit far-fetched to have a direct T-intersection there on 155, but with a little bit of tweaking, we think this concept may work. This one here would have about 90-degree junctions with 12-foot-wide lane widths. And this would address the poor sightline issue in the high speeds on New Hampshire 155. And then, another group of designs that we proposed was a roundabout for the area. And this one here is just a roundabout with no addition of pedestrian features. And here, we have a zoomed-in version of the same geometry, except it does have sidewalks and crosswalks. And this design here would cost around about $1 to $1.5 million based on our rough cost estimates based on DOT former projects. And this would feature 16-foot travel lanes, a 50-foot diameter center green space, and a 20-foot wide truck apron to accommodate any tractor-trailer or large vehicle traffic through the corridor. And this... these designs address most of the concerns, the acute junctions, the sightlines, the pedestrian features, and the high speeds on 155. And so, at the end of our project, once we went through many months of consideration and design and analysis of the intersection, my team and I did decide that we feel that the roundabout with the pedestrian features is ultimately the best option. And the reason for this is because it really does cover all the bases. As we were performing our road safety audit, we really wanted to address safety concerns. In this conceptual design, we feel like it addressed the most of them. Like I just mentioned, with the pedestrian features, with the high speeds on 155, the sightlines, the acute intersection geometry, all of those things would essentially be eliminated with the implementation of this design. And though it may not be the most cost-effective, we feel like there's really no price tag you can put on safety for the community. So, we feel like that was ultimately the best idea. And so, at this point, I'd like to thank you, everyone, for their time tonight and open for any questions.
Well done. Excellent. Thank you. So, I have a quick question. I'd like to put this presentation in the eCryo and back on Facebook so people can see, you know, people who participated in the survey so they can see the results or people who didn't know what was going on. If anybody wants to offer comments now, should they direct them to the select board? Should they send them to DOT?
I would say, Bill, maybe you have a better idea. I mean, I think that maybe you would be the person to inquire with.
You going to be up to the mic or...?
Sure.
That's a good question. And I think that's kind of the basis of where we got... we came up with these projects is that they don't necessarily rise to the level of a 10-year-plan project without some kind of input. I think this puts a step ahead of a lot of other projects because we've got some public input. We've had some engineering evaluation of alternatives, and we've come up with a recommendation. So, if there are comments, certainly, I would recommend that the town work with regional planning to try to prioritize this. There's a number of ways that projects like this could be funded. If there was a crash history, it would be eligible for Highway Safety Improvement federal money. I don't think that necessarily applies to most of what Jesse presented here, but otherwise, it likely ends up in the 10-year-plan project. Certainly changing that sign back to the one that shows a curved alignment, that's pretty easy. My staff can do that right away. I kind of waited until this process wrapped up before we made any changes, but that's kind of an obvious one. And that's reflective of something that we saw with a lot of the curb signing projects is that if they looked at the technical standards for curb signings, the speed didn't warrant a curb sign, but we thought it warranted an intersection warning sign. Well, the road clearly curves, so it doesn't really make sense to have a straight road segment on the sign. So, that's pretty strange. But if there's any other comments, certainly Jesse's moved on to his professional career, so it's not going to do a lot of good to pull it up to him. But regional planning and the DOT would be the places to accept those comments.
Thank you.
Steve?
So, I have a comment. The Chevron signs that you mentioned, there used to be six Chevron signs on that curve. Bureau of Traffic sent one of their computer cars out Bureau of Traffic sent one of their computer cars out and determined that the pitch of the road and the speed of the road mirrored, and the Chevrons got taken down. We put, the town put Chevrons, those Chevrons you took pictures of, back up, because people were driving through the center of the thing. So, I think DOT putting signs back out would be a huge first step.
Understood.
I heard in the past, when I asked about this a long time ago, that it would have to be wider for that circle to work. Is that a functional size for a roundabout?
We did it, like Bill had mentioned before I started the presentation, these weren't really just conceptual, but the dimensions that we use in our drawings were real, we used actual-scale drawings, so the one that I showed was actually a 50-foot diameter roundabout. And based on what we saw, we think that it would fit. There may be some concern with some abutters land and maybe some driveways being affected, but I'm sure that if the project was to move forward, those things could be addressed and a roundabout could be implemented. And like I said, it is a large-scale project to put in a roundabout like that, but if it's something that, if, you know, all it takes maybe is one bad accident or a crash, and then, you know, ideas may change and things like this might be pushed forward, but we don't want it to see, see it get to that point, obviously, so. But yeah, the roundabout and all the designs were scaled and done, so they will fit, and you might have to kind of massage them a little bit to work, but they will work. Thank you.
That's going to be my question. In terms of the one that you're proposing, is that utilizing just the space in the right-of-way, or are you encroaching on some property, one of those properties?
Let me go back to, are you referring to the roundabout?
Yeah, the one, well, yeah. So, in terms of the space that you utilize in there, are you using just the space in the right-of-way for those particular corridors?
There, we, I believe, for this particular design with the sidewalks, we did encroach a little bit on the front edge of some of the abutters' properties, but when we were designing all of our designs, we tried our best to keep what was existing and really take as minimal as we could from the surrounding areas.
Okay. And that inner circle, that's where, if a tractor-trailer nice to meet the corner, it came right up on the top of it, just like?
Yeah, so that green space in the center there, almost like the bullseye, that would be regular grass, like is existing now, but around it, there's a 20-foot wide, it would, I guess you could use cobblestone or some sort of scored concrete, and that would allow for truck traffic to go around. And now, actually, one thing that, since I've started working, I worked for a consulting firm in Massachusetts, it's called Tetra Tech, and I've been exposed to a new version of software called Autoturn, and I'm sure, Bill, you're familiar with Autoturn. It's something that we didn't have access to with our student project, but looking back on it, I wish we did, because what it essentially does is it takes designed vehicles from the Ashto Green Book, and it allows you to kind of trace through your design and track the movement of a vehicle. And it's one thing that we didn't get to do with this project, but if it was to go to the next level, that's one thing that would be brought up and would be analyzed and to test what vehicles could make it through, you know, whether it be tractor-trailers, fire engines, and everything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent.
Very good. Chief, give any comment? Okay. Anybody?
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And, Bill, I hope he got an A.
I don't score it.
Oh, you don't score?
I did get an A from.
Oh, excellent. Excellent. Very good.
Perhaps. All right, we'll move to the next item, but I don't see, oh, there he is. Luke. You're up.
Just didn't make the time. Luke Burnins, Energy Committee Chair, 14-Lane. Long time no see. He hasn't been in front of the Board of Selectment for quite a while. I apologize for that. We were pretty much locked in the lockdown. Maybe you overdid it a little bit. So, and I want to thank you for your dedication and keeping up with the meetings, which I never, never did much with, so. I thought I'd pick up where we left off. A year ago, it'd be probably February, a year from this, a year back from this February, I did a presentation to the, or I did, I made a proposal to the Board of Selectment. We were in the middle of a project. I was talking to Bill Newell from Newell and Cratherne, who is an insulation company, and Bill had, the previous summer, had spent, he said he spent a day examining the insulation in the whole building, both sides, and he came up with a proposal to insulate the roof with closed-cell foam. And I had just gotten permission from the Board to have Bill come in and do a presentation to the Board, and it was scheduled for like March 20 or something like that, or just around, or maybe it was just after the town vote. And then, the lockdown was, I think, March 15th, so everything got canceled here. I called him up, he was kind of freaking out, he was shutting all his stuff down, and I haven't spoken to him since. Just to give a little bit of background on his proposal, he was going to come in with numbers and everything, but the sense I got was it would have been about $55,000, but we would have gotten a 50% rebate from the co-op. And he would have had a payback scheduled for the savings and everything like that. I haven't done anything with it yet, and I'll tell you in a minute. So, the next thing, one of the next things I did was, I think it was this December, I put in a budget proposal, perhaps for $500, and what I stated that I wanted, what I wanted to use it for was to find someone to come in to the, to the safety complex to evaluate the equipment, and the other thing was to spend some money on outreach. So, shortly, shortly after my proposal, I got an email from Andy Duncan. He's the person that, he actually did our last outreach event, which was, it was called the Button Up Campaign, about buttoning up your house, insulation, everything. And he teaches, he teaches, buttoning up, I don't know what he teaches, but he's a teacher at Laconia Tech, and he was doing a course this spring on Building Operator Certification, which he wanted me to do, but it would have been way over my head. So, but he sent one of his students, Tim McDonald, who actually works for GDS, which is a, kind of an energy audit company. They actually did an energy audit of this building, a blower door test, and so he's already pretty qualified, he just was getting his certification. And as his, his study building, he studied at the safety complex. So, he's been in five or six times, I believe, to do different readings. He's, he went through the whole building, looked at the equipment, looked at the lighting. He went up there and looked at the baffling and everything else, and so he's agreed to come in at some point and do a report on what he found with some recommendations on savings. And I, he, I also asked him to give me an evaluation of the envelope, the insulation, and he studied Clay Mitchell's report from 2011, nothing had changed really since then. So, but he, he does recommend the insulation project, so I was kind of waiting for an independent opinion about that. So, my feeling is that it wouldn't cost a thing to revive that project, have Mr. Newell come, if he's still interested, have him come in and talk to the Board and do a proposal and show you his proposal. Hopefully, he could, you know, he'd be willing to do that.
If you want to invite him, and he's interested in coming, we'll be happy to listen to him.
Okay. All right. Okay, that would be good. My, the second reason I wanted to talk to the Board is, the second part of our budget proposal was outreach, and so we'd like to do some outreach. A lot of other energy committees in the state have been doing energy fairs, and we had one maybe 10 years ago, or maybe it was like eight years ago, before I was on the committee, and it was done with Sharon Meeker put it on. And so, I want to put one on. I don't know much about it, because I, I've never done, done one, but I want to contact other energy committees to see what they've done, not reinvent the wheel. Tomorrow, I'm having an hour-long video conference with someone from Clean Energy New Hampshire on ideas that it can use with fair. And some of the ideas that I had, the first one that I'd like, one of the biggest parts of the events that I'd like to do is called a Drive with Electric event, where you have electric cars, people can see them, hopefully, people can drive them, and this requires a lot of space. I tried to have something like that three years ago at the town fair, and apparently, there just wasn't enough space. It really is crowded, you know, there's just, there's just barely enough room for one more booth. You know, they're all crowded, and so, so I've reserved the pavilion at Little River Park on September 25th, three weeks after the town fair. And hopefully, the weather will be good, so we'd have the Drive Electric component, and I'd like to have homeowners talking about their electric cars, homeowners, or electric EV owners talk about their cars, homeowners talk about solar arrays, quite a few people in L.A. have solar arrays. Another thing is heat pumps. I think you're going to find that Tim McDonald, the student who came, is going to recommend heat pumps, and Joel Leewski, who is the coordinator of the Energy Savings Program at the co-op, he came four years ago, and he was recommending heat pumps. So, a lot of people have heat pumps, so heat pump water heaters. If I can find some contractors talk about insulation, buttoning up your house, maybe even geothermal, anything I can find. Of course, the big, the biggest problem is going to be getting people there. And so, that is one of the reasons why I came, and to get an idea of what I, what I can spend the money for. We didn't have to pay anything to hire someone to evaluate the equipment, so we still have the $500. And so, some of my ideas are getting some bands in to play at the, in the pavilion. I think we can get free musicians. Maybe have some contests, some raffles, free food, door prizes, I don't know, I'm going to get more ideas tomorrow. We'll need some money for advertising, so I just wanted to clear it with the Board to make sure I was allowed to spend money on that kind of stuff.
Well, you have, you have money that you've been allocated to do things, right?
Yes.
One is the outreach program. I don't see any reason why you couldn't spend it on brochures, et cetera, et cetera. And then, have you approached the fair committee also to talk about space and, you're talking about having some electric cars in for people to demonstrate and so on?
Yes, but we managed to get one in about four or five years ago, but we're talking like five or six, and having a space where people can just kind of talk about it and talk about each car, and then maybe drive off and one-on-one.
Have you talked to the fair committee about space, et cetera?
I did, I did three years ago, and they didn't seem to think there was any space for that.
Okay. You might want to move that up and talk to the fair committee.
I did reserve a booth for the energy committee for that day, so.
This is a different.
Yeah.
He wants to do a different day.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the fair is what, the second?
The 11th.
Oh, it's the 11th?
Yep.
Oh, so it's two weeks before.
Yep.
Two weeks is fine. Okay. Yeah, and maybe I can advertise the energy fair. I don't know, could we spend some of the money for food? When we did the Button Up Campaign, it was, it was actually paid for by a group called, I think, Plymouth Renewable Energy Association, something like that, and they actually gave us $80 for free, for free food. So, and that's one thing Sharon Meeker always said, if you have food, it helps people get in.
I don't know how many vendors they're already going to have there with food tents.
Well, I mean, on the 25th.
Two weeks later.
Two weeks later.
Oh, two weeks later?
Yeah, two weeks. I'm talking about an independent fair, a dedicated, dedicated day, just for the energy fair.
Okay, misunderstood.
And, and so, I'd like to have maybe, you know, a few pop-ups, maybe, and I'm going to the Sustainability Committee tomorrow to encourage them to put some booths up. So, I'm thinking big, it might not turn out to be big, but I'm starting big. And so, trying to get people there, maybe, I noticed during the fair that the kids really like the magician, and I would think that it might be hard to get a free magician, not musician, magician. And so, I might have to spend some money on a magician, but it might be worth it to get the families in, that kind of thing. So, that's what I, I just wanted to get approval for that kind of, I wouldn't, I wouldn't just like give $10 to everybody that wants it, you know? Just maybe some kind of a prize, like, I don't know, an electric lawnmower or something like that and gravel, just anything, anything to get through, people through the door is what I'm thinking. And I just want to clear it with the Board, and see what I'm allowed to spend the money on.
You know, I think you, you have enough discretion to know what's something's too much or whatever, so I would suggest, jumping, I would suggest you go ahead and start looking and see what, you know, what money you think you're going to have to spend, and if you think it's getting up there, come back and say, look, here's where I am, is this, is this okay?
Yeah.
And just, you know, let's see what we can do about getting an energy fair going.
Yeah, and like I said, I will be, I will be talking to Clean Energy tomorrow, and then people from other energy committees. I've talked to, well, only emailed, one person who put on a Drive Electric event this weekend. He's put on four or five, and he said the most convincing thing is when you can let people actually drive the car. So, possibly, that would involve maybe having some vendors come in to let people drive the cars.
You can do that.
Yeah, you might have to.
I'm going to have to look at, I don't know what the insurance issues might be.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's doable.
Yeah, if it, I'll, I'll learn how they did it and what's involved.
Sure.
I mean, it's still a little over two months away, not that long, but still might be able to get it together.
So, a couple of questions, just again, you think you can accomplish this with the $500 that you have in your budget?
Well, put it this way, we'll make it stretch as far as it goes.
Okay, and, and who else is going to be assisting you with this? Because I think there's not that many people left on your committee.
There's just Mary and Barb right now, but hopefully, this will help us find other people to join the committee.
Can I ask that, as you start to email people and reach out, can you just start including Denise and myself on those emails? Because it is going to require a lot of coordination, especially, as you said, with the insurance.
Sure.
The other thing, I just want to make sure the Board understands, is that this is to use the entirety of Little River Park, so not just the pavilion.
Actually, this is something I've been thinking about, is what if it rains? So, I'm thinking a rain date for something this big just won't work. You can't ask people to set aside two days, so I'm thinking probably have the majority of the events, of the booths and the entertainment in the pavilion.
Right, but what you said was the reason that you, and remember, I tried very hard to get you to do this in conjunction with the Lee Fair.
Right.
But you said that the reason you didn't want to do that was because it took up so much space to do the driving event, so that's why I'm assuming that you're going to need to reserve all of Little River Park, not just the pavilion.
Well, I, I'm planning on calling Oyster Youth Association to see if they're doing anything with the others.
And chances are, well.
Chances are, somebody's doing something, but, so I would, I would try to coordinate with them, you know? Still only started on it, but I, yeah, I do, I do understand what you're saying, and I'm trying to, the big thing in my mind is, is the possibility of rain. I would hate to just see it totally fall apart, so if you can plan on having the majority of the stuff in the pavilion and still have the cars out, maybe in the parking lot, or maybe off to the side, where the booths usually are during the fair, off to the side, so people can go look at them.
Well, I think, I think if the car's stationary and, you know, there's a salesman out there, and he shows them the features, so on and so forth, I think that's doable. I think when you get to where you're saying you want to drive them around the park or whatever, there's going to be some problems.
Well, no, I would, I would think that people would want to drive them on the highway, you know, because what's the point? I mean, you have to drive them on the highway, right? You know, because what's the point? I mean, you have to drive them on the highway, right? This is really, the electric cars are, take it from me, I have one. They're just as, to me, they seem just as safe as any other car.
My concern would be if you had a fair where we are promoting it and anybody's taking a car off property and driving it, so.
Oh, yeah.
And that gives me a little bit of agita.
As a person who's like set up a lot of these kinds of events, it takes an enormous amount of work. And one thing I just want to remind you of is that we have one of the biggest events of our entire year where we already have so many people coming from the town of Lee. You're never gonna get those kind of numbers any other day.
Yeah.
It worries me to kind of like hold off until two weeks later when people, you have all the food already, you take care of that, you have all the people already. So if you put your energy into an incredible booth and then you had, really put that energy into having a couple of cars that people could look at, maybe they couldn't drive them necessarily, but you could let people know where they could drive them. I just think that that's a lot of extra energy when you have this perfect thing two weeks earlier.
Well, I, yeah, I have thought about that. I've been to a couple of the fairs and we really don't get much traffic. I mean, mainly people that we know stop by and talk to us, but...
But what if you spent money instead of trying to get people there and all that stuff, you had something really fabulous? Like I know in the Historic Society, sometimes just would have some books and things. There wasn't a good study, and then they had crafts and they had activities people come do. That draws them in. So if you took that money instead of to do all this extra work and you really did something special, maybe that's working with some of this place. Maybe just even having the ability to get in and out of a car instead of driving it or some other options. Or like you said, have some raffles, but have them there.
Yeah.
Maybe just a little, I don't know. My gut would tell me that that's, you're gonna be reinventing a wheel.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe there's...
That's possible. And after I talk to these other energy committees and the Clean Energy, then I'll have much better ideas.
Yeah, exactly. And maybe they have some great ideas we haven't thought of and that makes perfect sense to have that be a separate...
I mean, we also with the fair often have the auto show.
Right, people coming for...
So maybe either this year, instead of the cars that we have had, it's just electric vehicles or you add electric vehicles to it. I mean, I know they wouldn't be able to drive them, but it would still be part of the auto show that we already do.
Yeah, yeah. There's some great cars coming out next year, the Ford F-150.
That's an incredible electric vehicle.
Yeah, yeah, they already have 100,000 orders. So, yeah. I will come back and give you an update.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, if we can help you, we'll help you.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joe Pass is it today. Lee Speedway manager.
Don't like being here for the reason I have to be here, but as you know, we rained out the last two weeks. And I don't know any more rain dates for my fireworks. So we'd like to try to have them this week. Weather's looking good. And if for some reason we can't, the week after that.
I'm okay with it.
Do we have any reason that that's not okay?
So does this add a new date to the schedule?
Nope, it would just be putting fireworks on an existing date that's already there.
So fireworks on July 16?
Yeah, it was originally, it should have been July 2nd with the rain date of the 9th. And then now it would be the 16th with the rain date of the 23rd, which are both race dates.
So if I understand correctly, you want to, let's see. This, what I'm looking at is a request to reschedule fireworks event from July 9th to July 16th. That's what I'm looking at with a new rain date of July 23rd.
It's just a matter of wording. It's the same thing, but yes.
So in other words, the July 9th rain date was a washout?
Yeah, we didn't race the second.
So you're not adding a number, what I guess what I meant was to the number of rain dates.
No, it's just adding, it's still an event we're doing. We're just adding the fireworks to it. We've always asked instead of just move the date, so. Keeping the lines of communication open like we always have, so.
I'll enter this motion. Move to approve the Lee Speedway's request to reschedule fireworks event from July 9th through the rain to July 16th with a new rain date of July 23rd. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Selectman Ludby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. I just would like to remind you of one thing. This weekend, we do have our car show and rodeo. There will be a burnout contest and they will be doing laps on the track. We do have an officer that's gonna be there and the fire department will be there to make sure there's no issues.
So let me just interject. This was promoted and presented as a non-race event.
It is, they're not racing.
Again, I just, as a non-race event, which if I'm one of the abutters, I'm thinking means I'm not gonna hear cars. So if cars are going around the racetrack...
They're just doing parade laps. They're not racing.
If cars are going around the racetrack, the neighbors are gonna, the abutters are gonna hear the cars. And then we'll get the complaints.
It's not gonna be any louder than motorcycles going by the track because it is now or anything else. They're not gonna be revving up the cars and racing. It's gonna be the same as the traffic coming in and out. And it was also billed as a car show and rodeo. And when I presented it, I said there would be some kind of obstacle courses and stuff and the cars would have some forms of competition. And I brought that to your attention in January.
Okay, but again, it's on the license as a car show and rodeo and a non-race event.
Exactly, they're not racing.
Okay, but it's up to the board, but...
I'm okay with it. We already proved it. I was, I understood what was happening. I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathleen Kerrigan.
Hi.
Hi.
I don't know what to do.
New Recreation Commission member appointment.
Okay, hi. Thank you for being here. Just glad to have you join.
How are you?
I'm great. I'm really excited about joining the recreation. My family has been involved in pretty much every single event that's happened here in Lee. We were dawn to dusk Lee Fair people. We live right down on Little River Road. And we walk up, we'd be there for the parade that started with the Lee Co-op. We'd be back there at night with all the shows and the karaoke and the square dance and all that. Fishing derby, we have trophies for that, so very involved. And I used to teach classes for the red department years ago. So I'm excited to be a part of the group.
Questions?
No, no, no.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. I move to approve the appointment. Kathleen Kerrigan is a member of the Recreation Commission to serve until March 2024. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Selectman Ludby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper? Selectman Brown? Yes, there you are.
Woo-hoo, congratulations. That's it?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
We'll move to Annie Kazowski.
We're asking for permission to use the town hall for children's programs come fall. We are expecting that hopefully we'll be starting our renovations. And the children's programs have grown so much that we just really don't have space for them. And we're hoping that we will be able to use the town hall for the times that are listed, 2:30, 4:30, for an after-school program especially. It's a very big program for the children's librarian. And also 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock for storytimes. And we'd like to have Ruth talk more about it.
A correction, it would be 3:00 to 5:00. Yeah, the kids don't usually get off the bus until about 3:30. So 3:00 to 5:00 would allow us time to set up and get everything ready to go. But yeah, our after-school program, we've already got parents saying, "What's the schedule?" And without a location, it's been tough to come up with a schedule. So what we really would like to do is use the town hall building for the after-school program, which is at least twice a week. And our storytimes are Tuesday, Thursday and Friday mornings, which we're hoping to continue that as well. But yeah, we're getting huge numbers. People are showing up. Many of you know that during COVID shutdown, we were actually only closed for about six weeks. We have only lost a circulation of about 15% over previous years. So people are, they're coming in, they're using us. Last week, we started our summer reading program. Judy had a drop-in craft. They had 37 kids show up through the craft. So, yeah, and parents are already asking. We just started summer reading, but they're already asking, "What's the fall schedule? What's the fall schedule?" They're ready to do it.
Ruth, if I may, what is the number of children you think are gonna be in this?
Prior to COVID, our after-school program had 20 to 24 kids twice a week.
But I'm talking about the use of the town hall. How many children at one time do you think will be in there?
Well, that's, it's a guesstimate, but prior to COVID, we had 20 to 24 kids in an after-school program twice a week. Our storytimes, 10 to 12, 10 to 15 kids. When the weather was nice, the daycare, it was located over the church. They walked through the woods. Come the storytime, they sometimes bring 10 to 12 kids just for daycare.
I'm concerned about the condition of town hall and whether it's, if you would, have a roll for, you know, X number of children and so on. I don't know what the interior involves.
It certainly gives us enough room to spread out, if that's a concern.
But there's two things.
There's no walls.
There's two things. One, since we had that issue with the town clerk's office, potentially hazardous materials have been exposed. So the THRC had a gentleman, Mr. Damaris come in. He does environmental stuff. So a study has to be done, and if there's anything in there, it has to be mitigated. So that's issue number one.
In the town clerk's office.
Yeah, so, but it's in that hallway too, as you go into it?
No, no.
What?
There's no asbestos in the hallway.
I said hazardous materials. I didn't say asbestos. He's been in there and checked it out, so.
What has, I'm sorry, I just didn't know there was anything in the corridor.
According to him, yes.
But do we know what it is?
No, that's what we have to pay to get him to check it out. So that's one thing. Two, now that it's a meeting space, you can only have 12 people in there unless you have somebody there in terms of monitoring things. We came across that when we had the open house.
Monitoring what things?
There needs to be a fire person in there because that particular thing is not designated as a meeting space. So you have to have a fire person. Yes, I didn't know anything about this either.
Yeah, that's if it's, well, we might want to have the fire chief weigh in on that.
Well, he rained in on us and we told us that we needed to have somebody there. So there's different people there, so.
Yeah, it depends on how it's, the event is categorized.
It's a meeting. That's what we had to... So those are my two concerns.
I just haven't been in there and I don't run, I mean, I'm assuming that all of the equipment has been taken out. It's gone to the town offices. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So there's still, there's no desks or no filing.
The building's empty.
It's a built, face empty space.
It's no longer an office, it's a meeting space now. Then that's what the issue is.
I think it would be a good thing to have the fire chief weigh in on it and say that's a possibility. We'd like to do everything we can to promote these programs because library's important.
Absolutely, and I think it's so vital that we have as much to do for the kids as possible, especially with everything we challenge it. I love the idea of a big space. I just want to make sure that we're safe.
Certainly.
Checking, making sure we know we're in a meeting space, that kind of thing. To make sure that, because I know we have to be more careful when kids are involved. So just make sure that's safe and tied up. And so I think it's maybe it's just a matter of checking out like what the fire safety, I don't know how long we can, how long we can get all that information together. So we definitely need a big old cleaning. It's pretty nasty in there.
It needs to be cleaned. Definitely needs to be cleaned.
It's not a pretty space right now.
I don't know, looked like a pretty nice space? No, it's actually, I think Phil Stevens did clean it.
Oh, he did.
Is the mitigation person scheduled?
I'd be more concerned right now, to be honest, about mold. I mean, the air in there is, it's bad. It's bad. And I don't, I mean, I know you need the space, but it was an extraordinarily unpleasant working space. And we'd like to see if it would, if it could work for us. I mean, we're not talking about spending eight hours a day there five days a week. If you're looking for a storytime.
I'll come up with a list of the reasons why we couldn't. See if we can test those, figure those out. And then if we can fix those things quickly and enough to make it possible. We've asked the library, told them they can't make the addition. The addition they need to do in order to make them more space. We have not given them the ability. Like there has to be something that we can do so that they can move forward with the changes the library needs to do and also continue to...
The trustees and the staff are really anxious to help out in any way we can with this.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that that's, I think if we have concerns, let's knock them up. If it's mold, if it's whatever, all those things, let's figure out what those are. And then if it's possible, I think we should try. If it's not possible, of course, but I think there's no reason not to. So I just try to actually figure out what needs to be done and do it.
Are some of these mitigation things that we could spend the grant money from federal grant money, ARPA?
Yeah, that's a possibility as well. If it was something that was fixable in a simple way. You need it by September?
We usually start at Labor Day when school starts. School's actually starting on August 30th, yes. So the few days before Labor Day.
So I think it's...
Yeah, we have parents, you know, that are, they're ready.
Yeah.
So is our children's librarian?
I would just like to say so we could in a couple of weeks see where we are and then come back.
Right. Talk to the fire chief. See if we can get somebody in there that can give us a good evaluation of the status of the interior relative to things like mold, et cetera, et cetera.
Let's say for sake of argument that the building can't be used. What about a tent outside, sides?
Well, until winter comes.
Right.
We have a tent now.
But it would get you something.
No, we're using the tent now.
You want it now?
Yes, we started in May, April.
Yep.
We're looking for what the weather will be turning in the fall.
And the annex is not big enough, right? Because you don't have enough space in any one of those rooms.
I didn't think there was enough room in the annex. I thought the Historic Society had moved stuff in there.
Well, if you're, if you have a program that's happening every single week for hours, that should have some priority over a program that's, I don't even know if the Historic Society goes on in November.
Is it possible to see what kind of space that is there?
Yeah, I just think that we have to be a little creative because you don't have any other choices. I don't know what else they're supposed to do.
Right, because our current basement, you know, is 20 by 24. And that's not useful. So if we could find a space that's about that size, yeah.
Yeah, you've been in the annex though. The problem is it's chopped up.
Exactly, no, it's not one of the working spaces. That, you want me to come to the... That's, I mean, that's the reason.
I have upstairs. No one's been there upstairs in years, but...
Yeah, it's like you have to do five...
You can go up there.
Upstairs, where?
The highway department where the old kitchen is. There's an old kitchen up there that was a fire apartment.
If you clean it up, it's okay.
I'd rather come and work on the town hall.
John, I believe you were the one that met with Mr. Damaris about the town hall? Was it you or was it somebody else?
No, it was Mary.
It was Mary, okay. Somebody from our group met with you.
We had that report though, correct?
His report? He didn't do a report. He just came and told us what he needed to do. We have a report from the parish house. That's the one you're thinking about.
But we didn't get one on the town hall?
Not this kind of a report. I don't believe so. No.
And we can't like partner with the school either, could we, or anything like that? I don't know. Just wanted to make sure we can...
They...
Sorry. I'm new to all of this.
The school does have some after-school programs, but this is really elementary. It's a storytime, stories and crafts. And usually they have a snack when they get, get out of school.
I was only thinking of they could give, if they had a room, that's probably complicated to make the space.
We'd really like to get back to where we were before. We just don't have the space to do it right now. And if we're gonna try and clear out the basement in order to put a lift in, if we want to, you know, do some renovation on the existing schoolhouse portion, that's more space that we need, that we don't have to use.
So we need to do two things. So one, can the board authorize somebody to engage Mr. Damaris to do the assessment of the town hall for hazardous materials?
That's great, I see.
I believe it was less than 2,000, John?
I think so, yes.
Which we need to do anyway.
So we need to do it anyway. So how about can we task the town administrator to engage Mr. Damaris to do the evaluation on the Town Hall? Up to two thousand dollars. And secondarily, can we engage, she's gonna hate me, engage the town administrator to contact the fire department to speak to him about this request in the library.
Yeah, you know, I already have notes on my desk about this and I can't, I don't recall them with enough accuracy to be able to, because I did speak to him, when was that, Katrina, remember? I talked to you afterwards, that was a couple months ago?
Yeah.
But yes, I will speak, I will speak with him again.
Because when we had the open house for the.
Yeah, we had to have the firefighter there, I remember that.
So just, it's not like end of the world, but.
Right.
And.
His thinking may have evolved since then.
Okay, well, if, if we cover those two of the things, then I'll be okay.
That wasn't the, just gonna do.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, I make, I'm.
Well, again, I, I know you need a space, I know you do.
No question.
The mold and the mildew is bad. And I know they're only gonna be there for a few hours, but they're children. And some of them might be there multiple times and. Yeah, no, we wanna make sure it's a safe space, I mean, which is why we're coming now, because we really do need to plan.
Yep.
And we don't have a lot of alternatives. We can't come here for our children's programs.
So I make a motion to engage Raymond Damaris from Damaris Environmental to do an environmental study on the old Town Hall for a cost up to and not to exceed two thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Discussion? No?
Vote all vote? Selectman Bogby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. Motion passes. Halfway there.
I think it's, it's just about us figuring out where to make that happen. I think you need this thing, you need a place, and there's no question. And if we're asking you to do it this way, you have to.
Okay.
All right.
Let's, uh, let's move on to Julie Glover, town administrator.
So it was recently pointed out to me by DRA that the language for our Warren Article fifteen, which had to do with the fire ponds and cisterns, the language that was supposed to be voted on, wasn't voted on because it wasn't in the ballot. So it was the Warren Article changed the purpose of the existing fire pond and cistern capital reserve fund to allow for installation of new fire ponds and cisterns and to allow for repair and replacement of existing fire ponds and cisterns. You may remember that the installation part was the new language. And when you change the purpose of a capital reserve fund, if there is someone who are the agents to expend, you have to restate that language in the Warner. So if you go back and you look at, for example, the PowerPoint presentation at the deliberative session, it was, the second deliberative session, it, it had that language in there. The, the original Warren Article as proposed, as drafted, didn't. And then I learned, oh no, this has to be in there, so it did. And the, it, it didn't get picked up to put it on the ballot. So that means that we cannot spend any money out of the cistern and fire pond capital reserve fund.
Until?
Until we put forward a Warren Article next March to include the agent to expend.
And what was anticipated to come out of this?
Uh, I talked to the fire chief, and if you look at the CIP, there aren't any, there wasn't any planned money to come out of that fund, so he did not seem to think that it was going to be a problem, so.
So next year, we just have to include the same language, but include the agent's language.
Correct, yep, 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 yes.
So who should we blame? Should we blame Denise for this, or?
No, no, no. Actually, the guilty party came forward, which is appreciated.
The guilty party.
It's beautiful, I apologize, and I was like, wow, people just apologize?
So I'd like to revisit the idea of employee COLAs for fiscal twenty-two. So back when we were doing the budgeting for fiscal twenty-two, we were heavily in COVID. We didn't know whether we were gonna lose revenue. We were trying to be cautious with the budget. There were some other expenses for a new firefighter and a new police officer that the board put in. So there was no money budgeted for COLAs. Now that we know that we didn't lose revenue, as a matter of fact, the federal board thinks we lost six hundred ninety-one thousand dollars even though we gave revenue, so that ends up being a good thing for us, I, I would like to revisit the idea of the COLAs. The board did grant, ultimately, say somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars bonuses. You know, there's some additional cost to that, so, you know, maybe that total is up to about twenty thousand dollars. As point of reference, we actually haven't put those bonuses into payroll yet because we just started the fiscal twenty-two payroll. So I did a calculation and I, I finished the spreadsheet at about four-thirty, so I wanna check it again to make sure there's no errors in the data or the formulas. But a two percent COLA would cost about forty-eight thousand dollars. And I, I didn't do any research. I know, we all know that there is in fact inflation right now. I, I didn't look into what the inflation rate is right now, I just picked two percent. It's a number we've used in the past, just for the purposes of discussion. So I just wanna present that as something for the board to think about. Not looking for a decision this evening, just want the board to maybe think about that. In addition, we've talked over the past month, I've heard the board mention a couple of times that maybe it's time to do another salary and wage survey. You know, maybe we want to put together another STEP program, which the town, again, as a reminder, put together in two thousand eight and then abandoned. Again, this would be really helpful for departments, not just police and fire, but police, fire, highway, the transfer station, Town Hall, town offices, in terms of recruiting and keeping employees. It's, it's helpful for employees to know what their wages are gonna be and what they can expect them to be over the course of time. I also took the initiative to contact MRI, there may be other companies that do this kind of work. MRI's, I guess we could say, the preeminent firm in New Hampshire that does this. And I was pleasantly surprised, I mean, I'd wanna make sure that they covered everything, although it says, please to submit this letter of proposal to conduct a wage and classification study encompassing approximately twenty-six positions. I had told her, Carol Grandfield, that we have twenty-six full-time employees. Somehow that got translated to twenty-six positions. We probably have a little bit less than twenty-six positions. The scope of this study will be a salary market analysis to ensure comparable internal and external equity with comparable salaries for these positions and develop an updated classification and case system with steps. The cost of this is ninety-one hundred dollars. I thought the cost was gonna be about thirty thousand dollars. So it's the cost of ninety-one hundred dollars. So again, I don't know if the board needs to make a decision on that tonight.
That shouldn't take long.
But it, it is something that we have looked at doing to help with recruitment and retention of our employees. Any questions?
Comments, questions?
Comments, questions, discussion?
I actually, I know this is really geeky of me, but I literally spent my entire weekend going through every single salary in relative communities the best I could. Found the minimum and maximum according to the chart.
Yep.
And the only reason that I would pause, because I'm all about it and I wanted to do the survey, is I was kind of surprised at how often we fell on the maximum end of salaries already, which makes me wonder, going forward, you know, there's some, there's a few jobs that absolutely we need to bump up and we're not, we need to do that. And there's others, you know, so I, so I, I'm not sure. If the person in that position is already paid more than anyone else in the same-sized town that we can find, I don't need money to find out that we should, you know, we just have to decide how we're gonna handle it. So maybe it's, and maybe, I don't know, maybe they do it per number of jobs or something.
Well, the, the problem, two things, I think what you were looking at, because I think I sent you down, you were looking at towns of comparable size, or were you looking at everybody?
I actually went through a ton of different ways. I went through towns of comparable size, I went through towns of comparable budgets.
Yep.
I also went through if the town was bigger, because we're kind of on the edge.
Right.
So I went through the towns that were bigger and also found the average there. So I tried to find the, the most fair, you know, reasonable large, large.
I, I think one of the things that these firms do is also look at geography, because you can't really compare salaries in the seacoast region of New Hampshire with Coles County. I mean, there's just gonna be a big difference.
Right.
So I think that's one of the things, that's why I asked whether you were looking at, whether you had just taken a look at everything. So that's one of the things they'll do, is look at geography in addition to town size and town budget size. The other tricky part of doing it off of the NHMA data, the NHMA data used to be more helpful because it used to describe what the person did along with that town's job title.
Right, which they don't now, but it's just.
And they don't do that because they tried to simplify it to get more towns to provide the data. You know, but what one town calls a widget might not be at all what another town has their widget doing.
Absolutely. I actually tried to go into different jobs too, to figure out, hey, this is this person's job, but what if they called it this, just to kind of get a little bit of a better? Because sometimes somebody does G three or four different jobs.
Right.
I didn't look at it, so, yes.
I think the chief's gonna offer you to do it for eighty-one hundred dollars.
Just proof of thought, whether, we don't lose people to comparable.
Right.
Towns, so.
Losing the bigger.
Yeah, if you're comparing apples to apples, that's not who we're losing our people to.
Right.
And when you're looking at, you know, when you get larger departments, the more manpower, the less each person is responsible for. So when you get to a department of our size, they're not just the patrolman who goes up and answers calls. They may be our firearms instructor, which is, has a lot of liability. In charge of body cameras, in charge of court, what do you, something like that. So they have added responsibilities that a large department may not. They just come in, do the ten hours, and go home.
Right.
For the smaller departments, we have to, we're, you know, chief cook and bottle washer.
I compared them to towns that were half the size as well, just so you know. But I really did try to, and I'm not saying that I can do this job, I just, my concern is if we have ninety-one hundred dollars, are we going to, if it's any part of a plan that we're really gonna implement and it's really gonna make a difference, that's great. Otherwise, that ninety-one hundred dollars could be going towards bonuses that I don't know, or, or salary increases. Because you can tell me that someone's overpaid and I'm still gonna wanna give them a raise. So like, how do you, you know what I mean? So I wanna make sure we're using the money as much as possible.
Another thing that'd be helpful is to look at the department's call of service.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's a good point, too.
How busy they are when they're on duty.
Right, right.
Because you could have a fairly decent-sized department in a wealthy community.
Right.
They don't have a lot of crime, they're not that busy. They may not have a twenty-four-hour department. So they don't have people on midnight shifts, it's.
Right.
So many different factors.
I think that's complicated.
Well, the, the other part of it is if we want to have a STEP plan again.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I can ask, I don't know that they would be able to do the STEP plan.
Right.
Without doing the analysis.
Right. Yeah, so I just, I just wanna make sure that if we are using money, it's for the best thing for the people that live here.
But you may wanna reach out to Chief Tyrell Loren over at Greenland. She, about a year or so ago, did an extensive statewide, position-by-position salary study. If you want, I can see if I can get that from her.
Yeah, I mean, that's already done, right? That's great.
Right, but no, but that's just police departments.
Right, but you gotta, that's one, one less thing she'll have to do.
Right, just, just something to think about. I, I think what, I guess what I'm saying is, let's, let's look and see where those flexibilities are. If there's, if you're worth in half with the jobs, we really don't know, let's do it. But if it's, you know, seventy-five percent are kind of max salary, so if we wanna do a STEP, we just have to do the math and figure and realize that we're just gonna be one of the better-paying communities, and that's fine, we just have to choose that that's a value that we have. And so, yeah, so then that money could go towards outside. I think it's important, I absolutely agree, I think we should have a, we should have that comparison. I just, I don't know, I guess we have to be ready for whatever they find, so.
So can you go back and ask her if her proposal changes if the number of positions is, is less?
Yeah.
Personally, my thing is, they're gonna do the comparison in terms of, like, one of the ones when we used to do it years ago is like, some towns have tax collector, town clerk.
Right.
Two separate people, we have one that does both.
Right.
So they'll take that into consideration, that's just one example. But that's what these people will do, they'll go in and look at positions that we have and then similar ones outside and give us an analysis of what that is, so. Yeah, I, I agree with you, if we're way overpaying people, we don't need a recommendation.
I'm not saying we're overpaying people at all, please, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that we're not on the, we're not on too many positions on the, on the minimum side.
Well, you have to take into consideration seniority also, I mean, there is.
I actually put the dates of everyone's hire too, just because I think that does matter. If someone's started in nineteen ninety-five, of course, they should be making more than anyone else in the town, in the state, in that job. They, they have all that knowledge that's, you know, incredible, and that's important, too. So, yeah.
So can you bring that back for the next time?
Yeah.
Because that's one of the things, that's just, just me. That's one of the things, initiatives that I'd like us to do this particular year. So initiate the particular study and then designate a certain amount of money to fund those particular things. So if it's, like, here's, not last year, when was it last year? We usually do about fifty thousand, maybe we do way more than that. So that's what I would like us to do, but to do that, I need data. And that's what that particular analysis will give us, so. And I would welcome the thing the chief offered from the Greenland chief, so.
In addition, and I, you know, the board would have to put the dollar value on this, is that you're having the outside consultant do it, rather than either me or the select board or department heads doing some analysis and deciding.
Right.
You know.
Which members.
Fred, you're overpaid, and.
Right.
Suzie, you're not, right.
Well, it's a disinterested party.
Right, right.
And that's the thing that's so hard with numbers, because what you choose to plan and what you don't is just absolute, like, that changes everything, so it's so important, it's a neutral party, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay, should we move on?
Sure.
Motion, motion to accept.
Wait.
What, or?
No, I'm not, I'm not finished.
You stop.
Oh, you're not, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Cell phone costs. So I spoke with the local Lee Verizon store, and they don't have the ability to put us on a government plan, and I, I don't pretend to understand the ins and outs of how Verizon works in terms of company stores and independent stores, but anyway. But they could put us on a business plan, which if we agree to go to auto payment, I've talked to Joanne, we think that that can work. It would be thirty dollars a line, so thirty dollars a phone number, plus the taxes. They could provide us with free telephones. So I think that the iPhone that they offer is an SE, which is the one that I have and is perfectly fine, to maybe up to a ten R, or they have several Android choices if you didn't wanna go with iPhone. That would be non-five G, but five G's not a real thing, right now, anyway. I mean, they advertise it, but, you know, it's not really. It's not really real. There wouldn't be any activation fees, we're not exempt from the taxes, that would be true no matter who we went to for Verizon. Did I mention the unlimited data talk and text?
No.
Unlimited data talk and text. So for thirty dollars a month, we could get the town employees who need a cell phone under the policy that the board adopted at the last meeting. I do have a telephone conference with our new government representative at Verizon, so I'll talk to him tomorrow and find out whether they can offer anything better through the government. If they can't, if it's the same thirty dollars, I, I would just as soon go with the local company, because if there's problems, you have a face to, you know, put to a name to somebody that you're dealing with, so. So I'll just continue, as I, you know, I'll talk with that person tomorrow and then come back at the next meeting. And hopefully, the board will be prepared to make a decision to do what we're gonna do. And you said that is for the plan or for the phone? Oh, yeah, that's. It's thirty dollars a month for each phone number. That's, it's thirty dollars a month for each phone number. So each employee would have their own phone number. The phones are free.
Okay.
They give us the phones. It's not, it's not the razor, it's the blades.
Got it.
So we're gonna offer twenty dollars a month?
No, but just so you know, if you go with the government plan, if you have an issue with your phone on the weekend or anytime.
Yeah.
You can't go to a Verizon store.
Okay.
To have anything fixed, so. Uh, I ran into that problem in New York. My phone died, went to the local Verizon store, said, if you got a government plan, we can't help you, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I don't understand their business plan.
They said, we can't access your account, we cannot help you, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
How many, how many lines are we gonna have?
Uh, I think we looked at, what, twelve to fifteen, something like that.
Right. So when you come back, can you bring us that number?
I actually, the past five meetings have that listed names and for some reason, it's okay.
Can you back to us who have that with the number?
Yep. In addition, um, so right now, it's a long story. It used to be Pete Hoyt's phone plan with AT&T. Um, the welfare officer has that AT&T plan. And AT&T has reached out to let me know that they are no longer servicing analog.
That's too bad.
Analog, she has, it's a little tiny, little tiny ancient flip phone. Um, because she only needs calls, she doesn't need data, she doesn't, so. So we're gonna have to be switching one of the phones anyway, so. So anyway.
We'll have to see if John LaCourse needs a spare.
Yeah, there you go. It's an old phone.
He's got an old phone.
I take that back, of course I have the names with me.
Oh, okay.
Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, I think it's fourteen.
Okay.
Um, now that includes the police chief and, well, Liberté, who already had phones, so. And I don't, I don't, we haven't quite figured out what we would do with those accounts, but.
Well, if we switch, it'd actually be saving money from what we're paying the government, so.
Yeah, 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 so. So, I don't know any of that.
So that would be comparable to what we're paying these people right now?
Correct. The only difference would be, um, the taxes, which is a couple of bucks a month, maybe.
Okay.
Per line.
Thanks, good.
Uh, and I do have a miscellaneous item. So remember, we've been talking also over the past few months, um, well, certainly since we came back to meeting in person. Um, you know, what do we wanna do? We, I decided, quite frankly, that trying to use Zoom would be clunky. I mean, I know there are some towns, bigger places, that have full-time IT staff that are doing it. Um, but one of the things that we've talked about is do we want to stream the meetings live? And we would stream them over YouTube, not channel thirteen, because that would involve an investment of probably twenty-five thousand dollars and you'd have to have a camera operator, so then there would be labor costs on top of that. So, uh, Back Bay's given us a quote of about twelve hundred dollars in equipment that would give us the ability to stream live on YouTube. Um, Denise, Endor, myself would then have to get trained on how we start it and how we end it and how do we work that with non-publics, but, um. So I guess I'm just asking whether the board, I mean, I take it out of the operating budget, so it's not necessarily a money question. It's, do we want to livestream our meetings?
I would want to know how many people are watching the static ones at the moment, the archrock ones.
Okay.
I've never got any information. I don't, I assume we can get that?
Mm-hmm. Well, we can certainly get it now that we have YouTube. Well, that'll tell you how many times the video was watched.
Yes, I, I understand.
Okay, that won't tell you that six of them were Denise while she was trying to do the meeting minutes.
So, yeah, if it's like, twelve people watch the last board meeting, I'm not too enthused about spending twelve hundred dollars. If it's hundreds, yeah, maybe, so.
Yeah, I think that would be my, the biggest question, obviously, is viewership, how much weight you got.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get those numbers advertising.
So get the stats without Denise.
Yeah.
And without John Tappin. I'm just kidding.
Right, that's one viewer.
Yeah, but they might be watching, yeah, it doesn't matter.
I think that is, like, it's also true that if you have it as a regular thing, people know that they can do. I guess it just depends if the live means that then they can interact, that's what makes it different. Right, so then, at that point, it doesn't matter.
Still, right.
Yeah, because if it's, if it's live and you're interacting, that's important, because then we get that information when we, when we need it. Especially only if it's cold snowy day, people don't wanna come in, but they wanna, that's one thing. But if you're just, you know, if, if you're, if you have the time, come join us here, or, I don't know. It'd be good to look at.
Okay.
All set, thank you.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Uh, roll call votes are Selectman Budby.
Yes.
Select person Casper.
Yes.
Selectman Brown.
Yes, yes.
Motion passes.
Yes.
I do.
Any miscellaneous unfinished business?
Yes. We, we experienced it this evening. This particular projector, the last time it was manufactured is two thousand thirteen. It doesn't have an HDMI input, so I would like us to find a replacement for it and have it installed. So I would like a little research done maybe by Back Bay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's not even in the same class as the one downstairs, so I think we need to upgrade to the twenty-first century instead of being the twentieth century, so.
Whoa, we're breaking through. Twenty thirteen was the twenty-first century, never?
Well. Yes, but in computer terms, it's the last century. You should've seen the guy, did you see the guy's face when I told him it didn't have an HDMI input? It was like.
Oh, well, he's twenty-two years old. The library came through, didn't it?
They did, they did.
Yes.
Like the heroes that they are.
So if you can do some investigation, we also, we'll need to change the cable going up there, too, so. Because that's just big jack.
Thirteen years old.
So. So something comparable to downstairs. Is that it? For your own?
Hey, I'm, I'm spending.
You don't remember telling, that wasn't that long ago. You don't remember what we spent on that projector downstairs, do you?
I, I wanna say we're on fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, around that. Because we all shared the cost of it.
Right, right, exactly.
Cost of live streaming meetings.
Well, it's a little bit, just to put it bluntly, it's a little bit embarrassing that we don't have capabilities for somebody when they come to plug into it.
Sure.
And we have to lead with the library to assist us, so, you know, that's, that's not right, so.
John?
John Tappin, one eighty-seven Steppingstones Road. Um, this projector is ten twenty-four by seven sixty-eight. The one downstairs is nineteen twenty by twelve hundred. Uh, if you're gonna consider a new one, I think you really ought to, um, consider four K. Um, so that you're not, again, obsolete in just a few years. Um, and if you want to be able to, um, put up things like a budget with a spreadsheet with all those numbers on it, um, one like downstairs, you might find not adequate either.
Good point.
Thank you.
All right. Make a motion to enter into the non-public session per New Hampshire RSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three, Roman numeral two, for Ren Small A, roll call vote required.
Oh, add in, add in C's? Add in C's?
Add in C.
Oh, add a C, add in C.
Okay.
And no L?
No L?
We have no L?
Yeah, there's an L.
Oh, you did, you need to mention L, too.
I don't see an L, I don't see an L.
It's there.
It's A and.
A and L.
Actually, ninety-one hyphen A, colon three, Roman numeral two. And then.
Well, we need an A, a C and an L.
What version is it? Oh, he's, he's using the old one.
You're using the old one?
You are. I don't know where, I don't know why. We'll have to discuss that with the office manager. I have no idea.
Somewhere in there, there's an L.
An L and a C and an A.
A, C, L.
Oh, right here. Yeah, that's all I'm hearing.
Yes, that poor guy got his ECL ripped.
Turned red.
Oh. I'll second an A, a C and an L.
Thank you. I need to do a roll call vote for that, too. Selectman Budby.
Yes.
Select person Casper.
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes.
Aren't you glad you don't have nine council members?
Yes. It's a yes. There was a time when I thought maybe we should have five, but no. All right. All right.
Sorry.
Oh, and apparently the, uh, police chief communicated with Back Bay and a, um, it'd be about twenty-five hundred dollars for a four K projector.
Good lord. Isn't that part of the library? What's happening there, Tim?
We gotta get something that works up there, right?
It worked.
Can I ask a question while we're here? I don't know if I want to talk about this, but is there anything that we can do so that we don't have to pay late fees on credit cards?
Well, where was there a late fee?
On a credit card, somewhere.
I don't know, do you know who's?
It was last time.
Oh, last, yeah, yeah.
So I just didn't know if there's anything you can do to help so that if money needs to go out, like, to go out and then. I don't know. It just seems like that's the kind of thing that adds up over time.
You should bring that to the town administrative attention so that she can.
Oh.
Yeah, I think I was bringing that.
You weren't, you weren't gonna.
I was on that day when you came in, because it was the previous manifest.
Yes, I, I was. And for Denise to have to answer my questions and I have weird questions. All right, oh, look at this, it's all building up over here.
Yeah, it's your slow.
Well, or I'm multitasking like all women.
Oh, wait a minute, I don't have to sign this one either.
Is that a chairman thing?
Yes.
Oh. What's the matter, what's the matter? You're more important than us. No, we're just aware of it.
And why am I getting this, this is not assigned?
Do we not have to sign this?
Mr. Brown has to sign it.
That's it?
Yep. There's two in it. He has to sign that one, too, not you.
Nobody wants my, oh, and we're good with parcels, that's it. Did we decide not to do the bingo?
Yeah.
Uh.
Oh, no, that's, that's the DFW.
Are they doing bingo until they're there?
I thought so.
Yeah, I think they are. Oh, exciting, I do, I was so busy with my own self, I didn't know that.
Is this the kind of consent agenda thing?
Yeah.
So why am I getting this?
You don't need to sign it.
You don't, it's just because it's pretty.
Denise is an Eva, she's giving the papers, I don't need to sign.
Oh, my gosh, Mr. Budby.
Is there a sticker on it that says?
Here's another one, here's another one, oh.
Do you know that sometimes you're not the easiest?
I just handed it in the stack in the interest of moving things along. I didn't sort through it.
Denise is a hard time, because she gives me a hard time, so.
Why does Denise get to know about anything that happened today?
I'll talk to him.
Yes, that's a private conversation.
Sure.
It's nice to know you, Denise.
Why, that's a joke you should make.
Oh, did I also mention the opposite day today?
Oh.
It is opposite day.
It's not nice knowing her.
I was the dentist this morning, he goes, it's gotta go. I go, what?
It's gotta go.
He goes, you two, it's gotta go. He was joking, but.
That's not funny.
I know. That's not funny. I was like, oh, my god. He goes, you seem like you're cheering up. So I think I've been going to my dentist for, did I tell you this? I went to the dentist recently, just regular, you know, regularly. And, uh, and, uh.
Denise, please, she's, she's.
I think I've been going to that dentist for at least ten years.
You are so funny.
Every time I go, the dentist.
Then you wouldn't get the full picture.
Checks me, he's like.
I've done this before.
Number whatever, it needs crowns.
Yeah, I've done that for seven years.
I wanna have to.
No, it shouldn't take that long. But, you know.
And then remember when I.
I do a little, I think, you know.
But.
As you get used to it, you can speak.
During the election? And they just stuck the right glue and put it all back, you know, like, put it back together. Yeah, that's gonna need a crown.
Well, the thing is, as you get to know how things, these things, it's good for you to turn new, that you see what we spend money on.
I know.
Two stick glue in there.
It's a good training.
I, I think it would be good. I actually appreciate it, because it helps me know how we're all teaching. And I can be like, you know what's really a problem?
Yeah.
You missed one. You missed one.
Yep.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Super hard to tell.
Yes, yes. He's taking a more than five day vacation.
Okay. We're gonna miss him. We're gonna have to plan.
I had to sweep up dirt in the hallway after Steve's visit today. Did you see the big clumps of?
Funny.
Like clumps of mud, it was like having Eric.
Yeah, it's like. It's like, it really is like living with a family. Like, everyone has like their own little, like, ways of things and heavy things.
And we all picked up Eric's hotel.
I don't know who Eric's.
Oh, she hasn't met Eric's hotel yet.
No, or I have, I don't remember, I apologize. I've heard that name. I, I didn't know it was happening till a year ago.
We can arrange a meeting.
Apparently, it will happen in its own time.
Hmm.
Back Bay, oof. We must have a lot of issues. Um, there's a Microsoft training, is everyone going to that tomorrow?
Or what?
No, it's supposed to rain tomorrow.
No, no, it's a Zoom, Microsoft training on how to make sure you don't let people, back people into your computer.
Oh, we've already got the new Bitdefender.
Oh.
And Bitdefender wouldn't let me on the lean age. I'm so. Oh, we've already got the new Bitdefender, and Bitdefender wouldn't let me on the Lee and H website.
That's like, bro.
Do you have that problem?
That's like.
Well, mine just shut right down, I couldn't use it, remember?
What does Bitdefender do?
Defends against hackers and malware. Didn't like me. Oh, um, I got another one of those, you have violated my copyright, and they mentioned some law, and I Googled it, I'm like, is that even, is that even a thing? It is, but then you get into the whole, oh, this is a huge scam.
Oh, yeah.
So we can just delete all of those.
I had a computer until one time, they said that they were charging me for a program I had before, and I got rid of, and just one time, just wasn't, didn't catch that it was wrong, and they got into my computer and died. And all, every picture of my children's childhood is in that computer, and I, and I can't get any way to get that out, so. But one day, I'll just meet somebody who'll know how to do it, because otherwise, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
Like, you took it to a place, and they said we can't?
I took it to, yeah, I took it to, um.
You know who could do that for you? The NSA.
Awesome, can I bring it to them? Oh, can I just pretend it's like a bigger deal than it is?
My niece works there.
Can your niece do it for me?
My brother, you know what?
Do you know a guy?
My brother, my brother is definitely, you know, could do it, or knows people who could do it.
Well, I need it, because it's my children's entire topic. My husband did save a lot of it, oh, I missed one.
Well, where's the signup sheet?
On the top, oh, yeah, here, you start signing.
That was on the bottom, isn't it?
Yep. You pick that, I'll put this one nicely. Is that all signed? Nope, not yet, it's all checked, though. I did my job really fast, it was not my best job.
Oh, Denise screwed up again.
Oh, my gosh!
There's no little stickers where I have to sign.
I'm gonna put his down, huh?
Oh, my goodness, I kept to go and look myself to where I have to sign.
The vouchers.
The vouchers, which I think they would have done.
That's on me again!
Oh, under like the bus we go. Jeez, there's two of them.
I need it, yeah, you're tough craft, I thought you just picked up.
Well, because it's so late at night, what is it, ten o'clock?
There's only two?
Oh, it's nine o'clock.
So is it? You're complaining about two things you have to find, that's it?
Yeah, well, there was no sticky, how am I gonna find it if there's no sticky?
Maybe you should say thanks for all those times you did the sticky, which is kind of exceptional.
That would be too nice.
You're really kind, thank you. I have germs, but you can have armor, Tim.
Well, the whole, we, that's gotta be first, I keep saying it, that's gotta be first on the list. Something wrong there. The HVAC unit is still.
Yep.
Yeah, can we definitely not, oh.
We're talking about that, I'm listening.
I just realized, we're still in a meeting, like, being recorded.
Yeah, we are.
Yep.
Yelling about, mm, nice job, good trip. I apologize to anyone who made it through the video this long.
Well, the numbers will tell us how many people watch.
To the end?
Yes, well, how many people watched?
Do you know how many times I've started this, like, for a meeting in another town, but I remained tall all the way to the end?
I'm gonna irritate somebody at the end of the table, but I'm gonna make a motion that we spend the twenty-five hundred dollars to get this replaced.
Make a motion, what?
To get this replaced, twenty-five hundred dollars to get it replaced.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Do you have to look into like what the choices are, or do any research about this?
It's about what they should be.
Maybe this is a little touch, or I can say no, just because, just, you can say no some things.
You can say no.
I'm gonna just do that.
Okay.
All right, gentlemen, have fun.
So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
No, we say no.
Oh, no.
Aye.
Oh, I'm opposed, yes, I'm opposed.
Motion passes.
Yes, I'm opposed.
So twenty-five hundred dollars, have them buy us a new thing, and they're gonna have to put in a new cable.
How about this one? Meeting adjourned.
Well, I wanna make sure the secretary has that down, so.
Oh, I got it.
She didn't put any stickies on those things, and she's gonna.
Probably adjourned.